It is.
This is the board session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman for April 11th, 2023. You're officially called to order. We're gonna call the roll. Vice Mayor Barnhill.
Here.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Hanson.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
Alderman Berger.
Present.
Alderman Brown.
Present.
Alderman Potts.
Present.
And Alderman Baggett.
Here.
Okay, and the mayor's here also. Are there any elected officials here from county? Okay, great. I just wanted to recognize if they are here, but if you're here, raise your hand and we're glad you're here and have an interest in what's going on. Somewhere. Okay. Are you telling him that we ask about him? I do want to take a moment of silence as we begin this meeting. One of our firemen has had a training accident today and was transported to Vanderbilt Hospital with some serious injuries, and I would ask that you join me in a moment of silence to think of him and pray for his recovery and pray for his family. So, thank you. Okay, thank you for that moment of silence. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to make comments for items that are not on the agenda. And tonight, I have a number of speaker cards. As I mentioned, we will line up based on the number that you were given. I have 106 people that want to comment. I will not accept any more speaker cards as of this very moment. If you haven't given it to Hannah, no more speaker cards. I'm gonna allow one minute per person, and as I said, I will interrupt you if you do not stop at one minute. So, let's have the first 20 people line up and we'll get started. And I might also say that as you speak, please give your name. It's not necessary for you to give your address. We have your address on your speaker's card. If you want to give your address, you may, but...
Mr. Mayor, may we ask you to say what city you're from?
Alderman Berger's requested that as you speak, you say what city you're from. But you don't need to give your street address or your apartment number. Okay, we're ready to roll. Let's stop the humming in the background.
Hi, hello. My name is Eve Berger. I'm from Franklin. The only opposition that you're going to hear today is content-based. That is, people don't like the content of Franklin Pride's pro-LGBTQ message, but it is well-established under U.S. Supreme Court precedent that permit approvals must be content-neutral to be constitutional. That means a local government cannot deny a permit based on an event's message, subject matter, or content. Put simply, there's no legal basis which this board can deny this permit. Doing so would be a textbook violation of the First Amendment that will subject Franklin to a lawsuit that will cost thousands in taxpayer dollars to defend. I encourage this board to consult the city attorney, Shawna Billingsley, about the cost of defending such a lawsuit. Do not let the fear of other groups' imaginations decide our reality. Franklin is a place where all are equal, all are welcome, and all are celebrated. Please show that tonight and vote for the permit. It's the right thing to do for Franklin, and thank y'all for your time.
Hi there. I live in Spring Hill, and my name is Eli Givens. I'm a senior in Williamson County, and I'm proudly transgender. In the face of our people being hunted on a national level, Pride is one of our only outlets to be with our communities and celebrate. When I realized I was transgender in middle school, there wasn't anything disgusting or natural about it. I felt happy and at peace. By condemning Franklin Pride, you are disrespecting and betraying those who elected you to serve. We have followed the rules, and we're simply asking you today to be on the right side of history and allow each one of your constituents to feel at home in this city. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Amy Duncan, and I live in Brentwood, but I am honored to serve on the Franklin Pride Board as well as be one of the founding members of Welco Iris, which is a local safe space group for kids here in Williamson County, and we represent kids from all of the high schools here. During the past three years of serving these two groups, I have met some of the kindest, creative, and most caring people, and they just want to experience a normal life here in Williamson County. And so, our community's always been here, and we have the right to be here. The Franklin Pride Festival is our one-time-a-year time to get together and celebrate our community. And Harlinsdale Farm is the perfect setting. It's beautiful, it's open, it's in the middle of our city, and it makes us feel welcome. And if Franklin Pride's not your thing, you don't have to come. The complaints and opposition that you have heard and that you'll be hearing tonight come from people that have never actually attended our festival. We've had a successful festival for the past two years, and after discussing the negative feedback from last year, we worked with you, and we made some adjustments to our application. And so, we ask you to honor that commitment that we have made to you guys and allow us to have our festival. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Avery Cloud. I'm from Franklin, and I am a junior IB student at Franklin High School. There have been some grave misconceptions as to the purpose of Franklin Pride. Pride in no way attempts to perpetuate any kind of indecency. Pride is an opportunity for students like me to go somewhere in this city for one day out of the year and not be afraid to be ourselves. Every day, LGBTQ+ students go to schools where we feel unsafe due to harassment, bullying, and discrimination, and Pride is a safe place away from that fear. Pride is not harming our children. Taking away a place of acceptance is harming our children. You cannot take away a safe place for people like me because you are scared. Franklin Pride is not some evil event attempting to corrupt our city. It simply wants to create a safe haven for people in our city, and there's no reason they shouldn't be granted their permit for this year. Thank you.
I'm gonna stop you just a moment. For those people that are out in the lobby and those that are cheering and hollering based on comments, that will not be tolerated. If you insist on doing that, we'll remove you from the building. So, we want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to hear everything that everybody says, and with cheers, and whatever else is going on. That interrupts my board, interrupts you as an audience, so please, listen to the speakers. Thank you. Go ahead.
My name is Heather Bottoms. I'm president of P-Flank Franklin, the largest national support group for LGBT folks and their families and allies. Franklin Pride is not asking for special treatment, simply equal treatment. Most of these protesters have never attended Franklin Pride and know nothing of the LGBT community, and yet are determined to stop it. I hope that this board will recognize that all of Franklin's residents, every single one of them, should be counted among the voices that you will hear tonight. The extremist views represented during these public meetings, the incessant rejection and vilification of the LGBT community is exactly why positive LGBT events like Franklin Pride are desperately needed. This hateful rhetoric does more harm to children than any rainbow flag ever could. This hateful rhetoric does more harm. They lead to kids to depression, self-harm, and even suicide. Franklin Pride allows the LGBT community to enjoy a day of celebration and belonging without abuse, harassment, and hate. Please vote yes. Thank you for your time.
My name is Catherine Klein. I'm a Franklin resident, and I'm an attorney. Last year, the city of Franklin celebrated Franklin Pride, issuing a proclamation taking, quote, "A public stand to support the rights of Franklin residents who experience a lack of equality and freedom from discrimination while affirming the dignity and worth of everyone." So, what happened? Why are we still debating this issue? Are those words meaningless? Because we are still here makes me think that they are. If you deny this permit, you are telling every single LGBTQ person in this city, in this community, that they are not worthy, that they are not equal, that they are not welcome, and that it is okay to discriminate against them. Do not discriminate against these kids. Do not discriminate against these adults. They belong here as much as all of the protesters, as all of the vocal minority belongs here. Do not let that vocal minority decide who is worthy.
Next speaker.
Hello, my name is Gary Taylor. I'm from College Grove. Regarding the permit request for the Franklin Pride Festival, I must express my opposition. Know that I do not hate the LGBT community or wish them any harm, but I believe that the lifestyle is wrong. This isn't about hate, racism, inclusion, equity, or even political correctness. This is about morality, moral fortitude, fiber, and character. As a Christian, I must stand for what the values I believe in. I know most of you attend churches in the area, as I do. We owe it to our children and grandchildren to stand for our Christian and biblical values and principles. This request suggests that there will be educational sessions available. I realize that I would not be included as a part of the festival, but the suggestion that the Franklin Pride Festival is about inclusion is false, as they reject individuals of their own persuasion who would suggest celibacy as an appropriate Christian value. Note that many Christians who voted for you expect the same Christian values to be reflected in your vote tonight. I pray you will have the courage to consider your decision with discernment and wisdom from God. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Amanda Price, and I live in Franklin. My family moved here for a wonderful job opportunity and the growth and the diverse history and the Southern charm, and I'm a proud mama of a gay teen. He is gifted, humorous, creative, passionate, and I love him. I value family. I value democracy. We all have... equality is so important, and they should have this right. If you've ever had a child who's wanted to kill themselves because they don't fit and because these haters are out here, just please show us some love and... I'm so emotional about this. I just... I love Franklin, and I want to stay here, and I want my kids safe, and I want him to have the freedoms that all these other people want for their children, too. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Derek Waters from Thompson Station, Tennessee. Appreciate everyone's time today to consider different points of view. I'm here to support, obviously, the Franklin Pride Festival and look to your vote in a positive manner on the festival itself. I believe it's important for us to consider at the end of the day that this is about setting up a space for this community to come together and celebrate their authentic selves. As with anyone within the community, those that are part of the LGBTQ community are proud of who they are and just want to celebrate that. Just like other organizations, they wish to have the same types of gatherings, festivals, and opportunities to enjoy the environment around them. This is about having the ability to be proud and supportive of the community as well. I hope that you consider allowing this festival to continue forward, showing the world the inclusivity that Franklin has. There are many eyes on the city now for a number of different reasons, and I'm hoping that you set a tone of acceptance. Personally, I'm here supporting my daughter and hoping and ensuring that she has a safe place to continue to live on the board. Thank you.
My name is Mickey Cutler, and I'm the Tennessee Chapter Lead for Gays Against Groomers, an organization fighting to end the sexualization, indoctrination, and medicalization of children, and I'm here to tell you that I am a gay woman. I am a gay woman who is unfortunately all too familiar with the contents of Pride. I am a gay woman appalled by the sexually explicit nature of these Pride events, and I'm appalled that people believe they have the right to expose children to these sexually explicit events in the name of equality and inclusivity. I assure you that nobody, especially children, cares who you sleep with, and I assure you that your citizens will not tolerate exposing children to sexually explicit events in the name of Pride. You can deny it all you want, but we have the proof. Do the right thing.
Hi, my name is Daniel Kraft, and I live in Franklin.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes, sir.
What number are you?
Number 20.
Well, I have number 10.
My apologies, sir. Number 10.
And Ms. Cutler, what number were you?
I'm number 10.
Who... what number was?
19.
19. Okay. I don't know how we got messed up, but continue on.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Elise Farrell, and I'm from Franklin. I'm also a lawyer, and y'all have been given the info. I've given it to you outlining the fact that there is no constitutional or statutory compulsion to grant this permit. In fact, both the Constitution and Franklin's own city ordinances support the denial of the permit. So, I can only surmise that if the permit's granted, in this current climate that we have, there's some reason other than a legal one for doing it. You've received four letters from Pride organizers and their supporters saying they had a successful event last year. Well, I guess that depends on what you define success as, because a San Francisco professor recently characterized an event where NCAA swimmer Riley Gaines was verbally and physically assaulted by a mob of people identifying as transgender supporters as a peaceful demonstration. So, I guess her definition of peaceful is different than mine. But contrary to what's been said, I've had more gay and lesbian friends than for a longer period of time than these kids have even been alive. So, I'm not anti-gay. I'm not anti-lesbian. Got millions of friends. Been with them for years. That's not the issue. The issue is the sexualized conduct with children.
Number 11, please.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Fryer, and I lived here in Franklin for the last 27 years, and I opposed this permit. The reason I oppose this permit, folks, is, and for one thing, I want to address all the hate, the assumption that we hate people. I can disagree with people who are polygamists, but that does not mean that I hate them. It means I disagree. It doesn't label me a phobic or racist or anything else. Simply means I disagree with their lifestyle. We know what has happened at this parade. I've been to gay Pride parades in Atlanta and Pensacola, and I know what happens at those parades, and so do you guys. You have seen the video evidence. You know that. We are at an inflection point in this city's history and in this nation's history where pronouns are being shoved down our throats, where words and language are being redefined, and we are supposed to capitulate to this, and at some point, Christian conservative Americans have had enough. I don't come against anyone, but when you're shoving things down my throat, I'm tired of it. So, I want to stand. I want to stand for our children. If you think they're not sexualizing our children, that would be incorrect. Go down to Vanderbilt and see the sex changes they're doing on young children. It's happening all over our country.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Thank you. Number 12. I'm getting ready to throw it in the trash. Number 13.
I'm number 13. Hi, my name is Laura Beth Peters from Franklin, Tennessee. I've lived in Williamson County my whole life of 41 years, and Mr. Mayor and Alderman, I actually want to first thank you for the service you've given this city, because I've never gotten to publicly do that. So, thank you for the hard work that you guys put into this. I've read the proposed permit application, and although to me it seems obvious, I'd like to remind everyone what the permit is ultimately asking for. It's simple. Do we or do we not want sex on display in a public park here in Franklin, Tennessee? Do we? All of the letters in L-G-B-T-Q-I-A stand for the sexual preference a person is making. The festival is the celebration of those types of sex. Why would we ever permit such an event at a public park? I know it's really hard to hold the line, but I trust this team and this group has the courage to do just that. Thank you.
I'm number 14. My name is Michael Battistelli from Franklin. We lived in New York for many years. 30 years ago, we moved south. I'm old enough to...
Let me pause you.
Yep.
TV went out. Okay.
We've got Scott's on it.
Got it?
Scott's on it.
We'll just pause you right there just a minute, and we'll start your time over whenever they get the TV fixed.
Okay, it's good, Mr. Mayor.
We're good?
We're good to go.
Okay.
We're good. Some 30 years ago, my family moved south from New York City. We lived one block off of Christopher Street, which was pretty much the center of the known universe of what today is known as LGBTQ A+. And none of you are living under a rock to have witnessed the unraveling of the fabric, the cultural and the moral fabric of our country. I would love to know, just as a curiosity, how many of our aldermen attended either the first or the second year of this festival? Did anybody?
We're not doing polls. Go ahead and continue your speech.
So, there's no hands that have been raised. I've been exposed to the behavior of festivals and events like this. I was in the musical theater business for many years, one of the non-gay males, and many of my dear friends are gay or lesbian. My concern is for the children, and my concern is that this festival... I've been to festivals like this. You've seen video evidence of what goes on at these festivals. My concern is that this is being held in a public park...
Thank you, sir.
...for which my taxes pay. If this were in a private location, I'd be fine with it.
15.
My name is Serena Prince, and I live in Franklin. Five years ago, I escaped Commifornia, and these are... in this area, there is a majority of believers, and we cannot be silent. Those who believe in Jesus and His word note that what is right is not relative, and the truth does not shift based on the culture. God's word is clear that homosexuality is a sin. Seeing the anti-Christian liberal agenda and minority LGBTQ anti-tolerant tolerance group take over our cities, schools, and our government is what drove me to go to college, to go get a degree in government for six years. Christian conservatives must not... no longer be silent while we watch evil take over our nation, which is one nation under God. So, I appeal to you, Mayor Ken Moore and Alderman, to not permit what God calls sin. As our elected officials, you must answer to your constituents, but more importantly, you will answer to God. In the words of my relative William Penn, "Right is right, even if everyone is against it, and wrong is wrong, even if everyone is for it."
Number 16.
That was my daughter. I am Gina Prince, and I just want to thank you, Franklin City Council, that we can speak here. I appreciate it. I moved here five years ago from California. God sent us here, and this is one of the reasons why. So, I am a believer. I'm a minister. I'm a mom. I'm a business owner, and I appreciate this family that I feel that's here in this whole region, and I feel that what is here, I want to help protect. But as I was praying this morning, because, you know, there's a God in heaven that does... He speaks to us, and He was speaking to me about you all and the accountability as leaders, because I pray at the Capitol on Wednesdays. I pray for both sides. My heart is for you, that you get along, that you're unified, but we're going to be accountable for everything. And I just want to read the scripture in Hebrews 4 that the Lord gave me for y'all. "And no creature is hidden from His sight, but all are naked and exposed to the eyes of Him, to whom we must give an account." Please take to heart, all you leaders here, the accountability that is so severe. To much is given, much is required.
My name is Robert McNamara. As I look around this room, it's not lost on me that we are vastly outnumbered, mostly by folks that did not attend Pride, merely repeating fabricated untruths. Numbers, however, should not be the issue here or the decider. We are protected by the Constitution of the United States with freedom of speech, freedom of expression, and freedom to gather. As a founding member of Franklin Pride, I'm compelled to lend my voice to those who do not have a voice. I have known since the second grade that I'm gay. Growing up in the 1950s and 60s, there were no Pride organizations, no gay role models for me to turn to, mostly, you know, so coming out was a very long, arduous process for me because of vitriol, like we're hearing tonight. Furthermore, if we were planning anything illegal or indecent, do you really think that we invite the Franklin Police to be in attendance? Look around the room. They're standing right here. How many arrests have there been made?
Thank you. Number 18.
Thank you for letting me speak. Hillary Tutt-Mayet. I grew up here. I'm raising my kids here in Franklin. I have stood with all of my friends, and I have made all of my friends, the entire community, not just a part of the community, this part of the community that is loud, but they are intimidating. I want to address the true evil, the hostility, disdain, and intolerance for dissent, brazenly consumed with bigotry, misogyny, tyranny, and violence. I have been threatened by the Franklin militia that is in this room. They followed me to my home. They have threatened me. My kids are scared to death to have me here today, but I'm gonna stand here with all of my Franklin friends. My kids are afraid to walk down the street with their gay friends, afraid to walk down the street with their black friends, because we have been threatened, and I see you, and you will not threaten me anymore. I have been shouted at for wearing a mask in public. I will not be threatened anymore, and do not let them intimidate you, please, because I seriously feel for the history of Franklin. Do not let them destroy it, please. Please.
Number 20.
I'm back.
Thanks for adding some humor.
No problem, sir. Sorry. My name is Daniel Kraft, and I live in Franklin. Decency is on the line here. I have been exposed to the sexual content that goes on at these events. I'm a retired San Diego police detective, which is one of the eighth-largest cities in the United States, has one of the most gay and lesbian people that live there. I have worked events like this. I have seen it. It's not just that we have to worry about our kids. What are you doing to our officers? You're shackling them. We were told, it's one day. It's just one day. I have seen sexual content be thrown towards me while in a patrol car, working this event to keep people safe while people are doing sexual content towards me and acting like they weren't going to get in trouble. On a normal day, we would arrest somebody like that that did those kinds of things.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for the next 20. 21 is Bill Petty. You're number 12.
Oh, I'm number 21, Jeff Daniels from Murfreesboro, Tennessee, but I'm here in Franklin the majority of the time during the week. I just want to thank you, but one of the people made a comment that they just want to have this one day a week, and if we don't want to come, you don't have to. But what if I do want to come? The thing is, I don't want... I don't want to see a guy twerking in front of me. I'm 60 years old. Has nothing to do with my kids. I don't want to see it. I'm not going to twerk in front of my wife at a family public meeting, picnic. I'm sure you don't want to see me in a bondage gear outfit. I wouldn't look very good. What I'm asking for everyone here, trust God, because the truth is the truth whether you believe it or not, and every one of us is going to stand before God one day and say, "I got it wrong." Fear that day when you stand before the Lord.
Hi, I'm Bill Petty. I'm a refugee from Evanston, Illinois. Moved on here a year ago. Evanston, Illinois doesn't have a Pride Day or a Pride Week. They have a Pride Month. And tell me, I'll tell you, it didn't start with a month. It started with a day, and then it got bigger and bigger and more inclusive and more inclusive. In 2017, there were approximately 15,000 American youth that were diagnosed with gender dysphoria. By 2021, that number had jumped to 42,000. You see a trend here? Can you wonder why there's a trend? I can't imagine what it's like in 2022. We have... don't forget that the T in the L-B-G-T-Q-A-I+ is transgender. They support that. They push it. They espouse it, and what's happening, and we're seeing it in our schools. We're seeing it in our churches. We're seeing it in our organizations. It's even with Bud Light now.
Thank you, sir.
That's it?
Yes, sir. All right.
Hi, my name is Sandra Morton, and I'm from Franklin. I'm responsible for scheduling all the live events for Pride 2023, and I can assure you that there will be no drag show. All the musical acts are talented. They're appropriate, and they're affirming. There seems to be a lot of fear around this festival, especially by those of you who've never even attended it. especially by those of you who've never even attended it. There are things that have been said about our community that is simply not true and quite insulting. Some of us are parents too, myself included. We are your teachers, we are your bankers, we are your neighbors. We're the artists. We're a part of this community. And I'm reminded of a quote that comes from Beauty and the Beast. "We don't like what we don't understand. In fact, it scares us. Kill the beast." Well, I remind you to be careful of who you hate, because they may turn out to be someone you actually love. Please be on the right side of history and vote yes for our Franklin Pride this year. Thank you.
Peggy Kingsbury, City of Franklin. I'm a 63-year-old white, straight woman. I've been to pilgrimage and Pride more than once to each festival. I've seen many more things at pilgrimage that made me blush than I have at Pride. About one week ago, our state legislature stood at a precipice. Their decisions would determine how our state legislature would be viewed. Their decisions would determine how citizens feel about representation and acceptance. Tonight, you all are at a similar crossroads. Will our community be seen as one that promotes a harmonious and respectful environment? Will we be seen as one that respects all citizens? These words come straight from your proposed decency ordinance. Cities who have reputations as inclusive and respectful of all citizens allow businesses and residents free participation in our economy without fear of discrimination or hostility. Please vote yes.
My name is Cindy Massey. I'm 65 years old, and I have lived in Franklin for 52 years. I go to church with Clyde. Jason Potts is my alderman. I'm wearing the Pride sticker. I am here to encourage you to vote to let this festival go on. These people have bent over backwards. They have changed their lineup. They have done everything they can to get this proved. And I ask you not to discriminate against them. I want to tell you a little story with 65-year-old white, straight female. I think you can probably tell. My husband's standing back there. We went to the pilgrimage festival a few years ago, and we heard Steven Tyler, Aerosmith fame, singing. A woman sitting beside me was in her early 40s. She had a 10-year-old son with her. At intermission, she said, "I cannot believe Steven Tyler is talking like this in my Franklin. There are children here hearing this." And my thought then is the same as it is today. Why are you taking your 10-year-old to see Steven Tyler? If you don't want your child to go to pilgrimage, my gosh, don't take them. It's as simple as that. I encourage you once again.
Thank you, ma'am.
Approve this. I don't see how you can legally. Thank you.
My name is Ramat Hamer. I'm a Brentwood resident, and I'm the chairman of the Williamson County Young Republicans. I strongly stand against permitting the Pride Festival in Franklin. I hear words like "family-friendly," "innocent," "fun," and that disturbs me, as last year, that was not the case. What's innocent about a fully grown man half-dressed in suggestive prosthetics? Putting on a show for children? What is family-friendly about a Pavlovian idea that seeks to destroy the nuclear family at the expense of fleeting adolescent innocence? And what is fun about toying with the minds of children, suggestively influencing them to a point to where they are encouraged, encouraged, to second-guess their God-given biology? Family-friendly, innocent, fun? This speaks to something much bigger, the definitions of words. So for clarity, I will speak the language of those that support this debauchery.
Thank you.
This racially non-traditional cisgender male disagrees.
Hello, I'm Bob Britton. I live in Franklin. I'm 72 years old, a retired corporate executive, and I've lived in Williamson County for over 22 years. I was shocked and saddened by the hateful and hurt-filled comments directed at the LGBTQIA+ community and Franklin Pride Festival that were made at the last Boma walking session. I thought they reached a new low when someone tried to conflate the Covenant School killings with Franklin Pride. That was disgraceful. Remember, the LGBTQIA+ community are our neighbors. They attend our schools. They raise their children here. They work as teachers, nurses, doctors, lawyers. They pay property taxes and sales tax in our community. All they want to do is pursue their hopes and dreams freely and safely and be treated with respect and dignity. I'm sure the majority of the negative comments that we've heard, those commenters have never been to a Pride Festival, and I'm sure the vast majority of the aldermen have not been to a Pride Festival. I've been to both of them, and I took my entire family, including my wife, my daughter, my twin grandsons, who were eight at the last one.
Thank you, sir.
And we had a wonderful time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Abby Peterson, Franklin, Tennessee. 21 years ago, I moved to Franklin feeling the warmth, warmth and hospitality of this town. Today, I look into faces filled with hate and fear. No warmth. The Jesus that I follow tells me that I can loosen my grip on fear because of the cross. However, your role here is not to enforce scripture or the Bible on your citizens. Your role here is to be fair and just to all people groups of Franklin, all. Public parks are just that. They are public. Public means all, not just Christians. Please show the warmth and fairness here that I know Franklin to be. Approve them. Say yes to food trucks, games, music, stickers, for a kind and loving people group looking for one day of joy. Thank you.
Hi, Jill Colvin, Franklin, Tennessee. I've lived in the DC suburbs and Southern California, and now we reside here in Franklin. I can tell you that when it comes to acceptance and tolerance, middle schoolers in Southern California face ridicule from teachers if they don't celebrate students coming out as gay and lesbian. The peer pressure is incredibly real. And I'm here to exhort you today to stand for decency, stand for on integrity. I represent the many parents who are shuttling their kids from school to soccer or baseball practice this afternoon who couldn't drop their lives to be here to voice their own perspective. In DC, it was common knowledge that on Pride weekend, you stayed home. You couldn't go down to the Smithsonian or the mall, because it wasn't the organized events that were bad. It was all the stuff on the back streets and all the stuff happening in the crowds that was indecent for your children to witness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brent Hahn. I live in Franklin. Personally, for me, this is not about opposing gays or lesbians. I don't care who you date. This is about opposing a very dark political movement with a specific agenda. And everyone in this room knows what that agenda is. We've seen it play out all over the country. And there's no appeasing the activists behind this movement. They are going to call you a bigot, no matter what you do. So you have two options. You can be called a bigot and have this destructive element in our community, or you can just be called a bigot. Personally, I like the second option. But just keep in mind, as you choose between those two options, all of us will be watching closely as we choose who represents us in the future.
Sally McCorkle, Franklin, Tennessee. I'd like to address two points. First, I'd like to remind the aldermen that y'all weren't elected into office to vote your conscience or the opinion of other appointed officials. You were elected to represent your constituents. Secondly, to Franklin Pride and you and the media, please stop spinning allegations of vicious, fierce treatment and hatred against this group simply because we don't agree on the venue or the content. Not only is this untrue, that tactic is getting wearisome. No one is denying your gathering. Find a private venue or a safe space that you say you desire. It's your past behavior coupled with your insistence on a public setting that includes young children that raises concerns regarding your true intentions. Please vote to deny this permit.
Hi, Jeff Feldman. I live in Franklin. I'd like to make a couple of points. One is, if you've noticed, of a lot of the people that have come out here and spoken in front of you, a lot of them are not from Franklin. And just as that is, last year, there was approximately about 5,000 people at this festival. The majority of the people that are going to come to this, tourism, whatever it is that you guys are searching for, are not necessarily, this isn't the right time for tourism. This is a very dangerous time in both our state, our city, and our world. I'd also like to point out, just as some people have, is that you guys are all voted in by us. You guys are here. It's very simple. The personal doesn't have to get into it. Your voice is our voice. Our voice, the majority of whatever voices you hear here, that's how you should vote, based on our voice. That's what your job is. And everyone will remember that October 24th.
I'm Marjorie Halbert. I live in Brentwood and serve on board of Pride. I'm the mother of a gay child, and I have lived with the pain and damaging effects of discrimination against our family. It's horrible. Tonight, Franklin finds itself at a crossroads because Franklin Pride is asking for that one day, actually nine hours of one day to provide our community a safe place to celebrate. We all know that the eyes of the world are waiting to see what you decide. Will Franklin continue to be a community of welcome or forever known as a city of discrimination? This board serves all people in Franklin, not just the loudest voices of discrimination. Your vote will determine if all citizens belong here. Please say yes. Vote to give Franklin nine hours of Pride. Thank you.
My name is Tim McCorkle, Franklin, Tennessee. I did some research on why the task force has addressed you people with a yes for this festival. And the premises for this yes are threefold, and they're each flawed. One, an equity issue. Gay Pride deserves the same chance to fix their indecency of their past events because pilgrimage was allowed to fix their inadequate emergency evacuation plans of their past events. The error is in assuming that the two mistakes are comparable when they're of entirely different nature. Gay Pride willfully misled city officials and violated known community decency standards. Pilgrimage failed to adequately plan for an infrequent act of nature, a pop-up violent storm. The significant difference is there's no deception by the pilgrimage group. This means there's no need for equitable treatment of the two organizations. It's moot. Two, the fear of a city lawsuit at Gay Pride. The power of this is in the threat. Gay Pride does not want to actually sue. This opens up the
Thank you, sir.
...legal thorough discovery process.
Thank you, Mr. McCorkle.
Hi, my name is Rosemary Muirhead, and I live in Franklin. I don't like boxing. I don't like violence of any kind. I find it indecent. I find it a little bit immoral for people to just beat the crap out of each other. So you know what? I don't go to boxing matches. I don't go to MMA fights. But I don't try to stop them. I don't try to cancel the fights. I don't hate the people that go. I don't judge the people that go. I just don't go. That's my feeling of what's immoral and indecent. May not be yours. May not be yours. You can't really legislate that. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Tina Perret, Franklin, Tennessee. There are many who take the freedoms and permissions that they are given and use them responsibly. Unfortunately, there are a few who will leverage them as opportunities to push the boundaries and test the limits of what others will allow and label as acceptable. I sincerely hope we can all agree that there is nothing acceptable about publicly normalizing the exposure of children to adult content and sexually explicit material. With children, there are lines of innocence that, once they are crossed, you can't uncross them. The damage these moments in time do is real, and the scars are long-lasting. And I know what I speak, because at age 54, I'm seeing multiple healthcare professionals, all of whom are attempting to resolve the physical suffering I still experience as fallout from my own exposure to explicit adult situations, starting when I was around seven years old. There was no one in my life who stood up and told the grown-ups around me that it was not okay for a child to be in that environment. So it's time for me to speak out now for my seven-year-old self and all the other children to say, as the leaders of this community, please stand up and be the grown-ups in the room who will guard the innocence of children in public spaces. Thank you for your time.
My name is Clint Mosley. I'm from Franklin, Tennessee. I'm a pastor of a church two miles down the road. And I just want to say that everyone that has spoken tonight, on either side or made in the image of God, both male or female, there are only two, and he loves every single person that has spoken tonight. This is not about us versus them or them versus us. The devil is a liar, and he's getting us to take the bait to fight amongst ourselves. I'm here to tell you, there are only two kingdoms, the kingdom of God and the kingdom of this world. As the kingdom of this world has been advancing, confusion and chaos, you cannot deny, is advancing. So you need to be very aware, Mr. Mayor, like you had the gavel in your hand to initiate this meeting, there's another one that has the gavel in his hand. He's seated to the right hand of the Father. And they are watching what happens tonight. There is no spiritual Switzerland. We don't get to remain neutral. We've hung out on the sidelines, straddling the fence for far too long as a church, and all we've got is splinter in our butts. We've got to figure out to take a stand now for a generation that cannot speak for themselves. And I promise you, heaven is recording. There's a spiritual law called sowing and reaping. Whatever you sow with your vote tonight will reap something in Franklin.
My name is Steve Berger. I've pastored in this community for over 26 years. This issue is about many things. One of those things is trust. You are being asked to trust a group who heinously violated public trust last year. You are being asked to trust that the previously invited Blair Bitch, who danced and dragged sexually in front of children last year, won't be there this year. You are being asked to not impose consequences for those actions, consequences that would surely have been imposed on similar heterosexual actions. You are actually being asked to yield more of the park this year to the organization. You are being asked to disregard state and local law that prohibits these actions in public parks. You dare not trust, condone, or permit another so-called "successful" family event. I beg you, please do not issue this permit.
My name is Sarah Berger from Thompson Station. We moved here 29 years ago from Southern California, have been a resident in Franklin for 26 years prior to moving to Thompson Station. And I just want to say, our trust has been betrayed. Our trust has been betrayed. Mayor, I encourage you, please, and aldermen, please, it is black and white. I want to speak up for my grandchildren right now and say, we want to create an environment in the public setting that is safe for children, where they will not be exposed to indecency, whether it's heterosexual, homosexual, it doesn't matter. And I also want to say this. This lie of being hated, gay community that's here, we love you. We don't hate you. I have friends that are gay. I grew up being surrounded by gay community in Southern California. Not one of them would tell you, I was hated by Sarah Berger, but only respected.
Hi, my name is Spencer List. I'm 17. I'm on the Franklin Pride Advisory Board. I want to say that community decency starts with not tearing down our neighbors because we don't agree with them. If you're going to decide Franklin Pride's fate because of its content, I would at least expect that you are decent and respectable enough to show up yourself and form your own opinions on the matter rather than basing your decisions on biased, erroneous, or flawed sources online. However, that is far from the case. Only one of you was in attendance. I urge you to approve Franklin Pride's permit, and I will leave you with one question. Since when did your doctrine precede my own?
Hello, I'm Robert Anstet from Franklin. Franklin Pride is a family-friendly celebration of the LGBT community here in Franklin. I'm a gay man who lives and owns a business here. I cannot believe that in 2023, I need to stand before the Board of Aldermen and urge you to approve the special event permit for Franklin Pride. The deceitful comments that were made tonight and at the last meeting prove that Franklin Pride is needed in this community. Franklin Pride, the Franklin Pride LGBT community has always been here. It is strong, vibrant, and is not going anywhere. Franklin Pride helps show the city the members of the LGBT community are just like everyone else. We want to live our lives peacefully and valued members of our community. Like other events held at Harlinsdale Farm, you can choose to attend. However, the Board However, the Board of Aldermen should not choose for everybody by denying the event permit for a perfectly legal, family-friendly event. I urge you to vote yes on the Franklin Pride special permit.
We're ready for the next 20.
Hi, I'm Sarah Webster. I'm a resident of Franklin. I'm not here to talk about whether or not this is about the permit. I'm here to talk about a little thing that you'll be talking about later, the cooling-off period. Every parent in this room, every teacher, every psychologist, every social worker, even every pet owner knows that you don't consegue today about something that happened nine months ago. Now jail does that, but jails and courts are dealing with things that are written laws that have been broken. And this, Pride did not break any laws. Some people may be offended by what Pride did, but they don't need to come. Pride had a legal permit that you granted them, and they did not break the law. If you accept the ordinance, I urge you that it should be applied for events coming forward from today when you, if you do the ordinance. It should not be applied retroactively. Pride should be given a permit and then held accountable. Thank you.
Hello, Erin Mazzoni, Franklin. Williamson Harold Letters to the Editor dated May 26, 2022. Last year Franklin Pride rejected a gay group called Equip, who wanted to have a booth at the Pride Festival. The group called Equip was told that no, they could not have a booth because they said that their agenda of, quote, "Consulting and coaching to churches on LGBTQ+ topics according to a biblical sexual ethic", end quote, is, quote, "harmful to children." But their sexualized drag show performances, along with sex toys located on the outside of their costumes, is not harmful to children. I think this should tell you all that you need to know. This is happening across the country, and we are not immune. Your vote tells us exactly how you feel about the sexualization of children. Your vote tells us who you are as an elected leader in our community. Your vote should be to protect the children, the neighbors, and the families that frequent the area. Thank you.
Hello, Jennifer Lee, College Grove. I've heard it said a couple of times, actually quite a few times, that none of us were there last year, and yet we have video. We have proof. We have seen the lewd acts, things that we see across at Pride festivals that happened last year, also across the country, nudity, sex acts while children are watching, drag queens thrusting genitals in front of kids, which happened here last year, signs that say, "We'll convert your children. We'll corrupt your children." Confusion is okay. There is a promotion of chemical castration to kids, double mastectomies, and foul fasties of young girls. I said that wrong, but genital mutilation of boys. Whether this group and agenda only have a mild version of this at Franklin Pride Festival last year or this year, it's only a matter of time before it turns out into what you would see in other major cities. Their goal is to twist and pervert a God-given gift. Let's not let that happen here. Thanks.
I'm Damon Rogers, fifth generation Franklinite, and I did attend both festivals these last two years, and I have never been prouder of a city. Susan B. Anthony says, "I distrust those people who know so well what God wants them to do because I notice it always coincides with their own desires." This is what we're hearing today. I hear folks talk about being forced to accept things that go against their beliefs. Nobody's forcing you to accept anything. We have choices in this world. You can choose to attend or not to attend. You're just not allowed to turn daily lives into a battleground. You have a choice to attend or not to. I believe in separation of church and state. But I do want to mention the golden rule. We all learned that in kindergarten. Do unto others as you would have them do unto you. Today, I'm so disappointed. Is that time?
Time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andy Jordan. I'm from Franklin. I want to thank the Board of Mayor and Aldermen for your service to Franklin. Please vote yes on the community decency resolution. While this is good, I do not think it's a panacea to allow Franklin Pride to be allowed to have the requested festival at Harlinsdale this year. The performers and/or participants violated community standards last year. There should be a hiatus this year. Please vote no to allow the use this year. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Stamman, Franklin, Tennessee. I have cash in my pocket. Says, "In God we trust." I think Franklin is one of the few communities that seems to remember how this country was founded. All of you were voted in. Actually, the majority does matter. You can see what the community represents here today. We're asking you, the boxing example is great. I feel it's advantageous for me to be number 48 because boxing, she makes a valid point, right? They don't box in public. It's at a private venue. If you want to pay and go, great. It's the same thing here. This is a public venue. We shouldn't be subjecting our kids to this. Period. End of story. I don't, you guys can eat at the same restaurants as me. You can go to the library. You can go to my church. I don't care. Just stay out of the public venues with what you're trying to advertise. My kids don't want to see it. No one else's kids want to see it either. That's not the way the country was founded. That's what we should be sticking to. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Clark. I'm a documentary, shoot documentaries all around the world. I've seen issues like this come up. I filmed it all over the world. I've seen the good part of it, and I've seen the bad part of it. There's good things that are happening out there. It's about love for each other. I understand that. There's also hidden things, and it's a sexual agenda. And you see what it's about. The truth is, it's about sex. And to put that in front of public is not right. We should all enjoy the fact that we should love each other is without a doubt, but showing sex in public to minors and to families that are out here, we all came here. We all live in a great community, and I thank you for that. This is an awesome community. But let's avoid falling down that hole to bringing something here that is not conducive to helping families. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darren Tyler. I'm the pastor at Conduit Church in South Franklin. I want to thank, first of all, everybody for your service here. This is a thankless job. And no amount of my thank you makes it any more better for you. No matter what decision you make today, somebody's going to be mad at you. But the cost of leadership is being misunderstood. The cost of leadership is being maligned and falsely accused. Today, I ask you to have the courage to stand up and to not grant the permit to the Pride event this year. Like many citizens of Franklin, I was shocked to see videos of grown men dressed as women dancing suggestively in front of minor children. I don't know in any other context in which this would have been allowed, let alone celebrated. The fact that the leadership of the Pride event not only allowed it to happen, but have gone a year without publicly condemning, apologizing, or making it right can only mean that they condone this behavior. When granting a permit, a great deal of trust is placed on the people whom you grant the permit to. That trust was violated. Trust is not earned.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
I do want to thank you. My name's Tom. I'm here in Franklin as well. I just want to read a verse, Proverbs 29:2. "When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked bear the rule, the people mourn." Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, my name is Jenny Bailey. I'm on the Franklin Pride Board. I want to say thank you for your service. Thank you for listening to all of us. We've all got a lot of opinions. I've heard an awful lot about our festival that we put on last year, and I just really don't know what festival they're talking about. The one that I went to had 100 vendors. We had that many businesses wanting to support this festival. We had banks. We had churches. We had, the Williamson County Animal Shelter was out there. We had a couple of newspapers, had booths. I don't even remember. It just, I understand that some people don't get drag queens as a public performance, and we heard that feedback from you. And so we said, okay, we won't do drag queens. Every time we've had the festival, we've met with the city to say, how'd it go? How do we do? How can we make it better? And we've done our best to respond to those. I think we have worked very hard, and I hope you'll give us a chance to show you again. Thank you.
Craig Walton, Spring Hill, Tennessee. I'm here to ask you to vote yes for Franklin Pride. I'm a staffer and a member at a church here in downtown Franklin. My wife of 30 years. Mary and I have five children. Two of them are LGBTQ. I lead an LGBTQ spirituality group. The most consistent issue for our members is feeling caught in between for parents between loving their children and belonging in their community, both public and religious. For LGBTQ+ members, they fear for their safety simply holding their partner's hand in public. Pride Festival set a standard in a community that LGBTQ+ individuals deserve respect, compassion, and sensitivity. Currently, violence against the queer community in our country is second only to race. This violence is driven by the fear and suspicious scrutiny you're hearing in this very room. Pride reminds the greater community to approach all people, especially those who seem different, with compassionate curiosity. It provides a space where families like mine can celebrate their uniqueness and breathe easily. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Simeon. I live in Franklin. I'm a retired LA County Sheriff's Deputy. I served in the city of West Hollywood for eight years and was there at the beginnings of the Gay Pride Parade. And number 20, David, had talked about how there was a hands-off policy, and there definitely was and is at these festivals. We're there for those emergencies and such. But I just wanted to let you know that there's a lot of things that go on. And I just wanted to let you know also a couple of things. We're in a public spotlight, not just with the community, but the world has grabbed it because we kicked the can down the road two weeks. So we're fighting a Leviathan, which Job talked to God about in the Book of Job. Can you catch Leviathan with a hook or put a noose around its jaw? That's Job 41:1, also in Job.
Thank you, sir. Well, thank you very much.
Ben Peterson, Spring Hill, Tennessee. It's an honor to be here and speak before all of you. There's not much I can say that hasn't already been said by those that oppose this. We've given Bible verses in every way you can look at this. But there's one element here that no one has spoken of, and it is appalling. And that is that there have been aldermen who have received death threats for voting their conscience and having their opinion. Not in my county and not in my town. Death threats will not be okay, especially for an event that promotes sexuality and inclusion and love. And now these amazing people have to live in the fear. I'm a combat veteran. I know what it's like to be afraid all the time. For them to live in fear is wrong.
Hello, my name is Sonya. I am a mother and a proud citizen of Franklin. Thank you for your time and for giving this matter the concern that it deserves. If anything has been evident from the last two years of Franklin Pride Fest, it is the outright disregard for the innocence and the safety of children. If we have learned anything from two years of repetition, it is that this event cannot be trusted to adjust its activities in favor of the protection and the welfare of children. If adults want to engage in adult activities or sexually suggestive behavior, they should do so on private property and forbid access to minors. As a mother and a concerned citizen of Franklin, I am asking the officials of Bama to side with decency and dignity by declining the permit for this year. Please hasten to protect our children and to preserve the moral fabric of our city. Thank you.
Hi, my name is April McLaughlin. I'm from Franklin, and I just wanted to share my concern for having the Pride Fest in Franklin. If the Pride Fest was for ages 18 and up, I wouldn't even be standing up here. I don't actually have a problem with the Pride Fest in and of itself because I feel that we should all have the freedoms to celebrate what we want, when we want, even if I disagree. My concern is that the Pride Fest is open to children, and I believe that we should not have this type of entertainment be open to children. It would be no different than if we had a family-friendly porn fest. See how ridiculous that sounds? But unfortunately, we are so scared to offend anyone that we throw the word pride out there, and all of a sudden, we have to be inclusive. There are actually drag queens out there posting videos that they are against including children in any type of drag events, Storytime, drag shows, fests. That just goes to show you that they're not events for children, especially if drag queens are speaking out. I'm for allowing these events to happen for adults, but please stop allowing them for children. Thank you.
John Williams Jr., Franklin, Tennessee. My ancestors moved here in the 1700s, donated land for churches, started the churches, kept them floating during the Depression years. I'd be failing my ancestors if I didn't put this up here and tell you that vote no, and God help you with your decency rules, because this book was written how many years ago, and we just can't seem to follow it. We just can't seem to follow the rules. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Clayton Clutz. I live here in Franklin, and I'm the president of Franklin Pride. I know you've heard from a lot of voices on both sides of this issue. I know you've received a lot of emails on both sides of this issue, and I also know that you've heard a lot from people who were not in attendance at our festival, and they have somehow reimagined it to be a very different event than what was actually held. As you consider our application, I encourage you to listen to the voices of the people who were there and vote to approve our application. Thank you.
My name is Tricia Lucente. I live in Franklin. Pride events in the last few years have been sexualizing children and intentionally pushing the envelope. They are not what they were years ago, when they began after the Stonewall riots. Do your homework. This has always been a political event. I've been to Pride celebrations, several in fact, and I do not remember ever seeing a Kid Zone or a Teen Tent. They're also taking place in an environment where they're clearly unnecessary, because no group is more affirmed and celebrated in our society today than the LGBTQ community. Last year Franklin Pride did push the envelope. They did have a show that was inappropriate with children present. They may intend to make it family-friendly, but that is not possible in today's ever-affirming political climate. Suicide is a social contagion, and so is gender dysphoria. The two go hand in hand for a reason, because children need our help, not our immediate affirmation. Pride is just not for children. Thank you.
We're ready for 61 to 80.
Jaden Stevens, Franklin, Tennessee. Mayor and alderman. Imagine with me for a moment that you throw a birthday party, and you invite many people over, but one of those individuals, while there, does something strangely sexual in front of some of the children. Now, fast forward a year later, are they on your invite list? Brothers and sisters in Christ, you were put for such a time as this in your positions. I know this is a hard decision, but I pray and I ask that you would have the courage to vote no on the gay pride event and stand for decency. Thank you.
Good evening, aldermen, all of you. My name is Dennis Carruthers. I'm from Franklin, long-term resident. I'm old-fashioned. I'm so old-fashioned that my wife and I actually have sex in our bedroom with the door closed. I'm also old enough to know that 40 years ago, a queer nation in ACT UP said, "We're coming for your children." I'll never forget that. And I want to tell you, no one talked about regendering. Look up Tabi Moses, T-A-B-I-M-O-S-E-S. She's a woman at 20 years old, wants to have children, but she is upset because at 16, they cut her breasts off. She can't breastfeed her children. There's a regendering story that's going on. This is a dangerous lawlessness that needs not to be put in our backyard. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Furlough. I'm a local pastor here. I'm just going to take a different approach here. I'm really looking at trust. You know, there are rights that everybody has to do what they want to do, but trust is not an inherent right. Trust is something that's earned. Trust is something that's given, and it can be broken. And trust that is broken without consequences becomes a mindset. That mindset becomes a mode of operation. That mode of operation becomes a culture for that group. And so what we see is a culture within the groups that is breaking a lot of the rules and the things that we would say. It's not the people that are here. It's the people who are coming from elsewhere that have the culture.
Hi, I'm Marvin Young, Franklin, Tennessee, local pastor. First, want to start off with, as a black, a native... I'm sorry, as a black, a native, and Frenchman, I do not agree with pushing an agenda that agrees with my color. It's different. Sex and color are different. Number two, we talk about the agendas. Let me speak of the spirit of the agenda. My kids, I have six sons. My 25-year-old have never had to experience what my 12-year-old experiences. Every day at school, he comes home and he says, "Dad, somebody else came." My 12-year-old, "Dad, somebody else came to me today to speak to me about changing who I am and told me that I'm not right unless I decide to change." That's not right. Pastor Anthony, you said trust. It's about trust. But I'm going to say this. If you stick your hand in the hand of a serpent hole, you will get bit.
My name is Virgil Tru. I've lived in Franklin, I think, for close to 15 years. I'm married to a minister, a female minister of the gospel, licensed ordain. I have a 17-year-old special-needs son and six wonderful grandchildren, and I just think this is an excruciatingly bad idea, excruciatingly bad, at the damage it will cause, small children who are impressionable. But it seems like that's the idea. You've got tents set up for them to come. Why are you setting up tents for them to come? You're going to put perversion, lasciviousness, licentiousness, debauchery, pulsating, grinding men in women's clothing, vice versa, in front of those small children, and they expect them to not be? Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Gabe Lyons, Franklin. Thank you for your service. I did go to the Pride Parade last year. I know a lot of people in here maybe didn't. I'm not surprised. When I was there, actually, there wasn't a lot of people attending. There was a lot of booths there. There was a lot of people working the booths, but there wasn't a ton of people experiencing it. So I've seen reports of thousands of people, but from my eyes, for a couple of hours of being there, that didn't seem to be the case. Secondly, for our residents worried about the content there, as a parent, I'm more worried about what's coming through TikTok and YouTube and Instagram than I am about what's happening in the park. It is a concern, but we need to be thinking about our own homes, our own families. For me, this is about the public trust. It's about when it's violated, there has to be consequences. If I park out here on the square for two hours and 10 minutes, I have a consequence, right? I pay the ticket. If there's not a consequence, I don't consider next time whether I'm going to violate that again. So I think this is very simple. It's not about content. It's about can we trust our representatives to only grant permits to people that we can trust?
Good evening. Thank you. Joelyn Thatcher, Franklin, Tennessee. Been a resident for 28 years, and I am here to simply ask you to vote no, simply from a matter of accountability, that accountability, as this man just said, there does need to be accountability for the actions that happened last year. So, thank you.
I'm Pete Strasser. I've lived in Franklin for 15 years. I'm a county commissioner. And you know, there's something that everybody here has an obligation for, people in this room, people out in the lobby, to protect the innocence of our children. Unfortunately, we saw what happened last year. Their innocence wasn't protected, and that's unacceptable. And we've heard a lot about consequences and some great examples of that. If you have the freedom to do something and you do the wrong thing, why should you get permission to do it again? We need to protect our children. There's a lot coming at them, and unfortunately, what we saw last year was given the freedom, these children were exposed to things that they shouldn't be. And everybody up here has an obligation to the children. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jack Mooreing. I'm pastor here at a church called Celebration of Life in Franklin. I've been a resident for 10 years, and I'm asking the board to vote no for the Franklin Pride event permit. I've heard some talk about equality, and certainly everyone should have representation in our country, but pride events and LGBTQ events are inherently sexual by definition. And this makes this event completely different than the vast majority of events that would apply for permits. Even the most docile version of this event would still be inherently sexual. And so Franklin, I believe, should not condone an event like that. This weekend, we celebrated the resurrection of Jesus Christ, and my prayer, one of my favorite scriptures is Titus 2:11. It says, "The grace of God has appeared, teaching us to say no to ungodliness." And that is why I'm asking you to vote no against this, because of the love of God compels us to love what He loves and stand against what He does not honor. Thank you so much.
My name is Anne Gere. I live in Franklin. I'm a 76-year-old cis woman who has been married for almost 55 years to the same man. And I'm disturbed that the wonderful, friendly, accepting, inclusive city that I moved to three years ago seems to have become so divisive. I would like to encourage you to grant the permit for this Pride Festival. No one is required to attend. If you don't want your children there, don't take them. If you want your children to go, great, but it's not obligatory. I'd like to leave you with...
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Sorry.
Hello, my name is Jared Sullivan. I was student body president of Franklin High School in 2009, and I still live here with my wife and daughters. And I'm a Christian, and Jesus was a lot of things, compassionate, a servant, but one thing He wasn't was a bully, which is funny, because a lot of people here tonight have to vote Jesus's name to justify bullying complete strangers. We are better than such smallness, such pettiness here in Franklin. If we say we are a great community, we need to act like one, and great communities do not discriminate against their neighbors based on gender, race, sexual orientation, any of that. Vote for freedom. Reject faux religious pearl clutching. Thank you.
My name is Michael Metters. I live in College Grove. Many Americans and government leaders are obsessed with diversity, equity, inclusion, genitalia, gender-altering, and public display of suggestive or simulation of sexual behavior. By allowing a Pride Festival, the door will be open for others, such as heterosexuals, necrophiliacs, nymphomaniacs, sadomaniacs, pedophiles, bestiality supporters, and others to petition Franklin's BOMA for a public event for them as well. To allow a festival for one group is to allow a festival for all groups in the name of diversity, equity, and inclusion. What could possibly be justification for allowing a public display of licentious, depraved, immoral behavior as a festival? A popular phrase is, "That's not who we are." Let's take a stand and not deny all sexually-oriented public events in Franklin. We're not Sodom and Gomorrah or San Francisco yet. Remember, our children are watching.
Hello, Reverend Dawn Bennett. I live in Nashville now, but I raised my three children here and educated them over in Noel'sville, and I serve as a Lutheran pastor here now. I recognize the important vote that you all have in front of you tonight, and I ask you to vote yes to allow clergy leaders and nonprofit leaders a way to fill in the gap that's desperately needed for mental and emotional support for our families. The deep south is a challenging place to be gay and religious. Pride is where LGBT people discover where their support lies. This event has seen an increase in churches willing to do the hard work of providing mental health and wellness services, along with support for suicide, where government agencies might be a little bit limited in that. The festival has become an important community resource, and I noticed number three on your agenda is consideration for Juneteenth celebration. Having been here for so many decades, I know that is a milestone, so congratulations on that. Franklin Pride is a similar event, so thank you for your consideration, and I hope that you are guided correctly by your conscience. Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Tard. I'm from Franklin. The only thing that differentiates the LGBTQ community from the rest of the community is their sexual proclivity. The rest of the community follows rules, has to follow rules. I've been producing content for 25 years. I have to follow rules of what content is appropriate in what forum. If you ask to continue to do the things that you did last year and continue to have sexual content in a public place, then you're not asking for inclusivity, you're asking to be treated differently than everybody else. They should be in a private forum, but not in the public forum. I think it's simple. I think the discussions about First Amendment are ridiculous in this case. It's lifeism.
Hi, my name is Laura Klepper. My husband and I were married in 1995, and we moved to Franklin then and bought our first house. I'm here today to ask you to grant a permit for the third annual Franklin Pride Festival. I participated in the last two events. They were supported by the local business community, by healthcare providers, and by churches. I volunteered in the family area, helping kids make fans with paper plates and popsicle sticks and play a giant game of Jenga. Recognizing the LGBTQ community as friends and neighbors is crucial for creating a compassionate and tolerant society. It's also important to understand that every person, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity, deserves respect and equality under the law. You're elected as leaders of the city of Franklin to ensure that Franklin is known as a welcoming city of compassion, of grace, and pride. I urge you to grant the necessary permit to ensure the success of the third festival. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robyn Steenman. I live in Franklin. I know you want to base your vote on which side you think will serve you papers. Yes, the left has legal bullies in the ACLU and Southern Poverty Law, but they aren't the only legal game in town. The left is loud, they like to bully, as we've heard about tonight. They push feelings and charge to duplicitous words like equity and inclusion over facts. Franklin is caught in the throes of a spiritual battle, and you are called to don the armor, the belt of truth, the breastplate of righteousness, to fix your feet and wield the sword that is the word. Nothing is mentioned about lawsuits or the human right to celebrate sexuality or mean comments on social media. It does mention a millstone in reference to those who lead children astray. The only commentary on your actions that actually matters comes first from above and secondly from the majority of the constituents you're hearing from tonight who are asking for your no vote. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Kim Pelletier, and I live in Franklin. I just wanted to reiterate what the mission of Franklin Pride Tennessee is. It is to educate, inform, and foster community that brings people together and their allies in a social, non-threatening, and empowering setting to uplift, educate, and present positive images that help maintain a healthy, productive, and visionary community in Williamson County. The purpose is so that we can celebrate everybody. It is not just for them. I don't know who "them" is, as other people have said that they are, you know, all among us. We are all the same, so there is no "them." We are all one group. Pride is for everyone. If you don't want to go, that is fine. I am a single woman. I have no children. I probably live in the most popular community to have kids, and I don't fight those.
My name is Melanie, and I am a resident here in Franklin. I love our city. I love Franklin. I love the LGBTQ community. I love the freedom that we have here tonight to be able to discuss this and share our views in a respectful way. What a privilege. I also love and want to protect the children in our community. I love really good entertainment, but I think we all can agree that there's certain entertainment and activities that is versus is not suitable for children. That's why it would be in a 21 and up or an 18 and up establishment. During the last two years of Pride, my question would be this: Were there performances with children present? Did the Blair bitch perform? Were community decency standards violated? Are there tents and activities that specifically cater to children and minors? On Franklin Pride's Instagram, are they promoting this year as a family-friendly event? Should this be taking place on city property versus private property? Are there explicit sexual themes, imagery, clothing, and accessories? Thank you.
My name is Larry. I'm from Franklin. Yesterday, my wife and I celebrated 47 years of marriage. We followed Jesus Christ, and we found success in following His ways. I love and accept all people, but that doesn't mean, like God, we accept all lifestyles that are sinful. People say, "Well, you've never been to events." I've been to 20 gay pride events, and what's happening here, I've seen across the country, you open the door, and then you start to see what starts to happen. This is not an isolated incident. There's a pattern. Jesus put a child in the middle of the group, and He pointed and said sternly, He said, "If anyone causes this child, a little child like this, to stumble or sin, it'd be better to put a millstone on your neck and cast yourself in the sea." If Chipndale said, "Hey, we want to come do strips and stuff like that. You want to come?" Just, you know, whatever, it's okay, we'd say, "No permit." If drunken girls in the bachelorette party said, "We'll come. We won't be drunk, but we're just going to do our thing, and everything's on the ground. Hey, let's have, you know, this and that." But I'll tell you this, when you have individuals that are promoting immorality on the ground... I say this. If groups don't fit, we grant no permit. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alisa San Vicente. I'm from Franklin. This parade celebrates and promotes a set of highly indecent and immoral sexualized behavior in front of who? Children. And they are advertising the event as family-friendly. Young people are already struggling with anxiety, identity, depression, and mental illness. The answer for these things is Jesus, not a celebration of sin. The wages of sin is death, and allowing this parade into our city would only bring that, promoting more confusion, perversion, and chaos into the hearts and minds of young people, because it's in a public arena. Please protect the children's community and vote no.
We're ready for the next 20, 80 to 100, 81 to 100, please.
My name is Tom Rice, and I moved to Williamson County in 1998. I have attended both Pride Events and most all of these meetings. I can say as a fact, because I sat right on the front row during the celebration, that there weren't idle children roaming around being molested or whatever you want to call it. They were there with their parents or a supervisor, all of them. And I ask you just to attend and take photos, if you don't believe that, but that's the truth. I don't know where all these other thoughts came from. At the last meeting, someone from Moms for Liberty spoke. At the last meeting, someone from Moms for Liberty spoke, and I thought, "Well, I don't know much about Moms for Liberty," so I started investigating, and I found a definition of liberty.
Thank you, sir.
Pardon? That's it?
That's it.
All right. Thank you all. Vote yes.
Hello, I'm Susan Phelps. I live in Franklin. Face painting, food trucks, the kids' tent with crafts, musical performances, the animal shelters, mobile adoption center. I could be describing any one of the many festivals that occur in Franklin every year, including Franklin Pride. I would like to read part of a statement that Mayor Moore made last year after the event. "The city does not discriminate against any applicant applying for an event permit, and we believe in the importance of upholding the constitutional rights granted to all citizens by the First Amendment. Franklin Pride provides a welcoming, safe space for members of this community who often experience a lack of equality and are subject to discrimination in the place they call home. We say Pride is for everyone, and we mean it. All are welcome. But if you don't feel that's the kind of event that you and your family want to attend, then it's simple: You don't have to come. The only thing that has changed since Franklin Pride was issued their permits in 2021 and 2022 is the political climate. Let's not let this change Franklin. We are a community who loves, who welcomes, and who cares about all members of our community. This festival is one of the many reasons why Franklin-"
Thank you.
Please vote yes.
Hello, I'm Craig Wall from Generations Church. I pastor there. I've been pastoring in Franklin for almost a quarter of a century, and we occupy that facility over there since 2015. We have a lot of kids there going to school, a lot of families we represent. We're asking you to vote no on the event. It's, Jesus said, John 14, "I am the way, the truth, and the life." And a lot of people nowadays have been saying, "Well, my truth is..." The truth is that there's only one truth, and I've taught people this for most of my life. But in 1987, I was ordained, and I believe what I've done is try to lead to Jesus. And an event like this is really anti the values of everything we understand as Judeo-Christian values, and I encourage you to vote no. And all the people I resent would agree with that. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Ashley Webster, and I live in Franklin, and these are my children. They're both gay. They grew up here. They went to school here. And they love Franklin, but they're very disappointed at what's going on here now. And I would like to ask, where have you been? Drag has been going on since the days of Shakespeare plays, and Pride festivals have been going on since 1970. I was born in '69. You guys, probably some of you guys were born in the '60s, too. You've been to Bourbon Street in New Orleans, walked down the street. My parents warned me when they took me to New Orleans, to Bourbon Street, that there might be some nakedness coming through, that I would be able to see through the open doorways of the bars, and that if I didn't want to see it, I should just turn my head. So I don't know how all of this got started in the past couple of years, but you guys, Franklin Pride Festival is one of the softest Pride festivals.
Thank you.
Because I've been to a real one.
Victoria Jackson, God hates sodomy. He hates homosexuality. He said it's an abomination. And he hates, God hates sexual immorality, all kinds, fornication, adultery, et cetera. And God hates pride, like one of the most things he hates is pride. Proverbs 11:12, "When pride comes, then comes disgrace; but with humility comes wisdom. The Lord detests all the proud of heart. Be sure of this: They will not go unpunished." Proverbs 16:18, "Pride goes before destruction, a haughty spirit before fall." And Sodom and Gomorrah proves that God hates sodomy and sexual morality and pride, and it's still there. And archaeologists have uncovered it. You can go on YouTube and see. It's a frozen city in sulfur and fire and brimstone, brimstone and sulfur. I just want to encourage this generation not to be brainwashed-
Thank you.
...and to watch-
Thank you.
...Beckett Cook on YouTube. Beckett Cook!
Hello, my name is Doris Tomssack, and just wanted to say this. I spent some time researching because I wanted to see what went on at these events the last two years. I didn't want just hearsay, and I saw the video of the drag show. It broke my heart to see a grown man dressed up, not just like a woman, but like a prostitute, like a woman straight out of the strip club, parading around with stiletto heels in a see-through, like lingerie-type outfit, spread eagle, opening his legs in front of children, men, women, and children. It was the most vile thing that I've ever seen, and I'm sure it can get a whole lot more vile, but my heart broke for him and for these innocent children that were subjected to that. And I just beg you, please, aldermen, do the right thing. It only takes half a conscience and about an ounce of courage-
Thank you.
...to say no.
Thank you, guys. My name is Doug Mann. I've lived in Franklin for 50 years. I know many of you. You know where I stand on this, but I am concerned not to speak so much to the Pride issue, but the dark clouds coming this way. We see the culture is changing, and we know that our warfare is not against flesh and blood, but their principalities and powers trying to shape our culture. And I know it's above your pay grade, but I do have a couple of questions. Why are we asking, should children see drag queens? Why should drag queens desire to have an audience of children? Answer that question. And, and I think that tolerance may lead to compromise. Inclusion may lead to abnormality. Deception leads to unthinkable, as things happen. Man-boy love. It's coming this way, folks, and we've got to make a stand, and thank you for hearing my words. Amen.
Good evening. My name is Ann Alcion, and I live in Franklin. I start off by thinking, asking that you maybe take, I thought this was an option, a year to decide, not vote for a year. And the reason for that is the heated emotions that are going on today. The accusations by the people who do want the, the permit granted are just inaccurate. I was at the last meeting, and two people here tonight said that they, the people that were, did not want the permit were hateful and fear-mongering, and I was here, and I was actually very proud of how people spoke. So these accusations are strong, and I know they come against you guys and any, it's like, anyway, it's a very heated time, so I would like to have a pause. Then the other thing is, the Pride event is inherently sexual, and labeling it as Pride is-
Thank you.
...a little, sexuality is a private matter, not something to flaunt in the public, in a public event.
My name's Barbara, and I'm a longtime Franklin resident, and I'm coming here today to speak up for saying yes on the permit for Pride. I almost chickened out. There's a lot going, this is very intense, but I really wanted to have a voice for our LGBTQ plus community. I'm a mom. I'm a grandmother. I'm wearing a Free Mom Hugs button today because there's a lot of gay children, adolescents, and gay grownups who have lost their families, whose families have rejected them. And so a group of us moms show up at Pride events and other places to give them hugs. I've heard a lot of people here quote the Bible, and it really makes me sad to hear the Bible used really as a, as a weapon. I'm here not in spite of being a Christian, but I'm here because I'm a Christian. And so-
Thank you.
...Lord of Mayors and Aldermen, I ask you to please grant the permit. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jimmy Rice. Been part of this community for almost 65 years, contractor and disciple of Christ. At what I had, I was going to speak, the Lord said, "Don't." He said, "Pray for everybody." I did that a couple, about a month ago, so I'm just going to pray for you guys. If you don't want to hear it, don't hear it. Lord, I call on your name, the name Jesus Christ that's above all name. We celebrated you, Lord, just this past weekend, who you are. The Lord, every, everyone from the gay Pride community, I have friends that are part of that. I have never seen them bullied. I would take up for them. Lord, I ask that your love that you poured out on that cross for all mankind, you created both male and female in your image, Lord, your love would penetrate them somewhere and heal them from some religious people. That religious spirit, Lord, I rebuke it right now in this place. May the Spirit of the living God, the Holy Spirit come in here. I pray unity. I pray against the spirit of confusion. I pray against the spirit of fear in here.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
In Jesus' name.
My name is Frank Olympus, and I've lived in Franklin since 1983. The issue is about behavior and responsibility. The 2022 Gay Pride event was billed as family-friendly, but the pictures prove it was anything but. The Pride group must take responsibility for breaking the rules at last year's event when sexually deviant activities occurred onstage in front of children. There are probably 100 private locations in Williamson County that would allow the gay Pride folks to hold their event there this year. Please approve Bed, Bedburger's community decency policy. Please deny the Pride group's application, and then deserve, observe the group's behavior at their 2023 event wherever they hold it. We'll see if they intend to change their behavior and have accepted responsibility for their previous actions. Thank you.
Reverend Betty Proctor, I live in Franklin. I ask that you allow the Pride Festival to happen again. I was honored to be able to serve at the previous ones, and would like the privilege to do so again. Our Christian community has come off the week where we have just remembered the story of how we tried to kill God for indecent behavior. The indecency of humility, the indecency of forgiveness, the indecency of inclusion of people who are outcast. I ask that we embrace that same moral indecency and hold our arms open for all of our community. Please allow this festival to happen again. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine. Thank you so much for listening. Really appreciate it. I moved here recently, actually, from California. Been to many, many Pride parades. You can't really avoid them in California. And I want to say it's a lie that we don't want the Pride parade because of hate or discrimination or anything like that. It's really about community decency, and it is by nature sexual, and whether it's heterosexual or whatever sex, whatever, it should be in a private venue. I can tell you, having managed hundreds of people, that when you reward bad behavior, and, and last year, there was a promise to, to observe certain community decency standards, and those were not observed. When you reward bad behavior, you get a lot more of it, and it, it's, it's, it's bad to, and again, it doesn't matter what the sex, sex is. Just please, I urge you to-
Thank you.
-approve it for a private venue. Thank you so much for listening.
Hi, my name is Penny Lukenhoff. I live in Brentwood, and I'm a Tennessee native. I'd like to focus on the word trust. Think how many decades drag queens and LGBTQ have been around, and nobody cared. Society could trust people organizing drag shows to keep it away from children. Starting last year at Franklin Pride, the community realized we cannot trust the organizers as they brought people who go by stage names such as The Blair Bitch, Hanukkah Lewinsky. These are porn star names. These are hooker names. Our, and yet the event was promoted as family-friendly. Do we really think the organizers did not know that their shows, the, in the stages would be sexual in nature? They lost the trust of this community by allowing the sexual acts where children were invited, openly invited. I don't think we can trust the organizers this year. It's nothing to do with individuals. It's the organizers of the Pride event. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Y'all are about tired, ain't ya? You're doing great. Thank you for all that you do to make this place the wonderful place that it is. My name is CJ Jackson, and I'll get right to the facts. Fact, neither Christianity nor homosexuality is on trial today, and we would all do well to remember this. We are taking a stand on a specific activity within our community. Fact, from the greatest of us to the least of us, the overwhelming majority of our community has spoken. We do not want this event to take place. Fact, last year's event violated its contract with our city, and I believe this to be true, but I'd like for the records keeper to check it, if you would please, that the contract stated that if violated, no permits would be granted for two years following.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Greg Meadows. My parents moved to Franklin in 1984, and I now have a home in Franklin. During our last meeting, a gay gentleman in high school shared the stress and ridicule he was living under as a result of people's actions. It bothered me, people were treating him in such a manner. I believe he should be treated better. However, I am concerned about the impression we will leave with my nieces and nephews and the children in our community by hosting a gay Pride event. But I would be concerned if the community was supporting an event celebrating any sexual lifestyle. It is not the norm for society to publicly celebrate a sexual lifestyle, whether it be old men who prefer legal young women, legal young men who prefer older women, multiple, multiple men or women, or even just a man and a woman, because it's not decent or healthy for a community. These types of public lifestyles would be too much to explain to young children. Will we now permit public celebration of any sexual lifestyle?
Thank you, Mr. Meadows.
Please do not support this permit.
Hello, my name is Lisa Wamsley. I'm 59 years old. I moved to Franklin five years ago with my girlfriend, who is 20 years younger, and my son, who is biracial. I gave birth to my son when I was 41, and I lived in the closet from the age of 25 until 41. But at 41, I said I needed to live an authentic life. And you know what? We lived in Atlanta for part of that time, so I've been to Pride in Atlanta, far different from the Pride here. I came to this event last year where I helped to park cars. I also volunteer at the local shelter. But Vice Mayor Brandy Blanton and City Administrator Eric Stuckey, you were there, and you said, "The city of Franklin is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer people in our diverse community, whereas it's essential for acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination, prejudice, whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth." My son is a biracial young man-
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Miller, and first off, I want to thank you guys and say God bless you, give you wisdom, discernment, and the courage to use it. I wanted to say a couple of points about equality. I believe there should be equality. Drag is a burlesque, and I would oppose it if it were Chippendales, and I would oppose it if it was an all-female review. Okay? I'm about equality, and I believe that any group that violated the strictures that they did last time would not be given a second permit. Let's be equal. All right? I'm about equality, and I think we need to protect all children equally. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for the time. My name is Wayne Garrett. I'm a citizen of Franklin area. I have three adult sons and their families and 11 grandkids all that live here. In the Bible, the book of Proverbs says, "Righteousness exalts the nation; sin is a reproach to any people." In our founding, one of our founding fathers, John Adams, said, "Our constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." Morality matters. This is a sexually-charged event. If we say yes to this, how do we say no to what comes after this as others- as other speakers have mentioned? If it's a legal issue, take that stand now, and let's figure out how to protect this community and our kids. I would, whatever time I have left, for the people in the audience and in the foyer, pray silently for this meeting and this decision. In Jesus' name.
101 to 106. I know the board is happy to hear that.
101. I want to comment on something here that was made that-
Give your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gerald Meadows.
Thank you, Jerry.
The gay Pride people, the Franklin Pride, are wanting this place as a place, a safe place. Harlinsville Park is a safe place 365 days a year. There's been no discrimination against gays to come into that park. They can come every day at all. But we've been just told if we don't like it, to stay away that day. That's my part, too. Okay? Now, I want to remind ourselves here. Lesbian, sexual. Gay, sexual. Bisexual, sexual. Transgender, sexual. Where in the world did this, did our society shift? If these people are feeling discriminated against, we got places all over the place that you can file lawsuits. If you're feeling that way, stand up and say so. There's people that will help you. You got a legal team back, and you're proving that already. I have, one, the thing that concerns me more than anything is I have not heard a single apology for last year's event by any of the gay Pride people in positions of authority on what happened there, and there were bad things that happened. Where's the apology? Where's the notice in the newspapers? You know, we made a mistake or two. We're going to correct things, and we realized and made a mistake. If they don't recognize it-
Thank you, Mr. Meadows.
They won't do anything.
Hi, my name is Edie, and I'm a resident of Franklin for 20 years. And I just wanted to encourage the board to please vote no because I'm a sinner, and I've been saved by grace through faith in Jesus without works. And so I am not saying that the Pride folks are- I have lots of family that is gay. I love them. I love every person in this room. And I want them to feel respected and loved by the Lord that created them. And when I say no to that, I'm echoing some other things that other people have said about a private venue would be better. But I noticed you guys have this cute little coloring book in the lobby for kids. And I know you guys love kids. And I'm just going to be praying for you guys as you make this decision. And don't be intimidated by anyone. And I'll be praying for you guys to make the right decision.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janie Thibodeau from Franklin. And I have photos from other Pride parades in the country. I don't think any of you would want any of that happening here. For first of all, the city of Franklin doesn't have any business issuing a proclamation for the continued use of city resources to further any agenda. Last year's Pride Festival broke two state laws, two state laws that I know of. Aside from the fact that Franklin Pride had no permit to operate an adult cabaret show, the city of Franklin allowed it literally in a state park. Also, US, there's a United States code that was broken as well. A violation of this section of the Criminal Code is a Class A misdemeanor and subject to a minimum $10,000 fine for the people associated with the festival and who put on the festival. It's clear that at least three state laws and one US code law was broken last year. Nothing should be done further until Franklin is willing and able to enforce city and state laws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emily Paisley. I live in Franklin, Tennessee, and I've been a practicing Christian my entire life. Nowhere does it declare that for somebody to be a citizen or a visitor of the city of Franklin or a citizen or visitor of the United States that they need to be a Christian or even practice a religion. I look to my minister for my religious guidance, not my city council. The positive family and community event the Pride Festival has become is something of which Franklin should be proud to hold. There are people who have lived here and people who have moved to this area with an agenda and a mission to make this city the simple vision of what they consider right. They intend to strip people of their freedoms as well as their inalienable rights. It's sad that such people cannot come to grips with their fears, misunderstandings, and ignorance. But that shouldn't give them, nor this board, the right to punish other people. Folks, if you don't choose to get to know or educate yourself about people who are born as part of the LGBTQ plus community, please don't go to Disney, May 31 through June 5 of this year, and don't attend the Pride Festival. To this day, I don't regret missing an Ozzy Osbourne concert.
My name is John Paxson from Spring Hill. Pride is the opposite of shame. Shame conceals why pride reveals. Just as shame seeks to hide all, pride seeks to bear all, literally. There's a mountain of evidence against the claim that this will be a family-friendly event. Do not be deceived. Please do not make our community regretful a second time. Law and etiquette prescribes that these forms of sexual expression be exercised in private, and I beg your vote to keep it there.
Sir, Kevin Thibodeau. Okay. Nobody else? So we're going to go on to item number one, which, well, actually, we're not going to do item number one. I think we'll go through all the event permits.
Item one and two both involve some presentation that we may want to-
So we're going to go to item number three, which is special event permit for Juneteenth celebration downtown Franklin to be held on June 17, 2023. Anybody have any questions about that one? Go ahead, Alderman.
I have a couple of questions. Do we know who the sponsors are for the event yet?
I know Mars is one of the big sponsors again. And the coordinator, she's down the hall. I think she's trying to make her way here. But I know Mars is one of the big sponsors. I'm not sure of the other ones.
And I know last year, we had a situation where we were kind of trying, as a city, to combine numerous Juneteenth celebrations under their umbrella. Has that occurred this year? Or is this a single user this year without any others?
This is a single and separate applicant. I want to be clear about last year, there had been an agreement between parties to work together going into that process. So it wasn't something we forced upon. It was the understanding of the groups. And then, as we got later in the process, their desire to do separate events, which we accommodated. But this is one applicant for one event.
And then, when other people step up to do a Juneteenth permit, will they also be allowed to do their permit?
Absolutely. They're welcome into the process, just like anybody else.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Tara?
Here, Tara, may. The question is about sponsors for the event. Yeah.
That have not been made public yet.
Okay.
Mars has contributed again, which was a huge financial boost for us. And our vendors and some local churches have also helped with that.
Okay, item four, thank you, is Heritage Ball sponsored by the Heritage Foundation at Eastern Flank Battlefield Park on October 7, 2023. Anything new and different?
No, sir.
Ticketed event for the Heritage Foundation at Eastern Flank. Yeah.
Item five is special event permit for Wind Down Main Street.
No different for that one either?
Also a ticketed event.
And we do have a list of performers for Wind Down Main Street. So I'll get that to you before the next meeting.
Go ahead, Alderman Burger.
All of the special events, which is different than just a permanent, are they all being required to list all the performers?
They are. Yes, as soon as they have them, yes, they are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good comments. We'll move on to Pilgrims Music and Cultural Festival at the Park at Harlinsdale Farm, to be held September 23 and 24, 2023.
So as they're coming up, item six is for the specific proposed event this year. And then, you may remember, we provided for a mechanism for kind of planning or designating events for larger events, for future events up to five years out. And they're also exercising that opportunity to add a new fifth year to that planning horizon.
Any questions about either one of those?
I do want to identify a specific issue. The applicant has requested a later end time for Sunday evening. That's not something the staff review team is recommending, but it is something they've requested, and that is part of this year's application. So that's just something that is a little different than prior years for you to consider. There you go. We greatly appreciate you guys supporting us in the past. We work closely with the authorities and with Monique and her staff and Eric and his staff for our annual renewal application plus the five-year kind of evergreen permit that gives us a chance to engage in those relationships with vendors and stakeholders that put this festival in its ninth year. We've had a great run, and we endeavor to be nothing short of the best boutique festival that puts Franklin in a great light, celebrates music and the community coming together. It is family-friendly. It's all ages. We spend quite a bit of time programming the kids' part. But once again, we have a great lineup. We're on sale. We're selling a ton of tickets. We're excited about this year. The 10 o'clock piece, which we do on Saturday night, helps solve the kind of en masse egress that would take place on an earlier conclusion. This 10 o'clock conclusion allows people to leave in a gradual way. The families tend to leave earlier. The folks that want to stay for the whole headliner do stay the whole time.
Right. And it also allows us, we open at noon both days. Saturday night, we close at 10:00. We'd like to be able to offer the same value to the two-day ticket buyers and to the single-day ticket buyers. We haven't asked for the 10:00 PM close until the sidewalks were finished, the three lanes were finished, and we feel that it's appropriate time. 10:00 PM, that music stops, quiet egress. Let's get to bed on Sunday evening.
Yes, ma'am.
In the past, you guys have asked for an extension on hours. And I've kind of been the one that's like, no, it's a school night. We don't need to do that. So when I learned that this was something that you were requesting, I was like, all right, I need to do my due diligence. So I reached out to friends and neighbors that I knew at Harlinsdale Court, I believe, Miles Manor, your neighborhood, people that are directly affected. I mean, some places you can hear the sound, but they're all like, we don't have a problem with it. So I do understand that staff is not in favor of it, but I also think our sound ordinance or noise ordinance is 11 o'clock for special permit music. And I know it's different. So I just wanted to let you know that I did my due diligence, and you can have my support on going a little bit later on Sunday night.
Thank you. Thank you. And we met with Patrick Baggett and Matt Brown through Mike Allday. You know, did our due diligence to make sure that we responded to your thoughts and concerns and were able to go out to constituents. And you came back to us that you didn't get pushed back. So we humbly ask to do that 10:00 PM closing.
Well, and I also have a question that's important. I think when I had talked to you guys about it, I was like, are we talking, you know, Cage the Elephant? Or are we talking Bonnie Raitt? Not that those people, one has performed there. I think it's important to know that now that you've announced your headliner for that night, it's definitely amplified, but it's more of an acoustic in nature than some of your maybe later afternoon acts that are a little bit more-
We've always had the more raucous- Excuse me, sorry. The more raucous acts on Saturday night. And this year, it's Zach Bryan.
Yeah. And it also added, you know, we visit with the police and fire and streets all year long with Monique's leadership. But the sidewalks and the lane expansion has allowed us to not have, for the first year, a pedestrian lane. So there won't be a street closure in the abnormal operations. There may be an emergency. There may be things that require us to deviate or divert. But for the permit and the traffic plan we submitted, there won't be a pedestrian lane closure. That means two-way traffic the entire day, all weekend. That's a wholesale change for access to the neighborhoods and just for the regular flow of the city. And we don't park the South Lot, which has alleviated a huge, you know, traffic jam of getting that lot unloaded. So these things are the learning, you know, curve of this festival. Been at it a while. We'd love to be here another 10 years as well.
Alderman Burger.
I just wanted to say, we're still finalizing the traffic plan. That's what we're hoping, to leave traffic flowing both ways. But the police department is still finalizing that.
Well, thanks for finding new ways to do things. Are you also going to open a stage on Sunday morning for a faith worship kind of thing? You've done that before.
We do, we have a gospel Sunday morning, and yes, we do.
And what time was that?
It's a down-home church. Great singers, a choir this year. It's going to be our first choir.
It's at noon, it'll be noon.
Yeah. The gate's at noon.